Good evening, I'd like to call to order tonight's regular City Commission meeting for October 5th, 2020. We'll call Tabitha.
Mayor Young?
Here.
Commissioner, uh, sorry, Commissioner Guthrie?
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I've seen the agenda, we don't have any proclamations or recognitions. Personal appearances are opportunities for organizations or citizens to make special presentations before the City Commission. Such appearances are scheduled in advance of the meeting by calling City Clerk Tabitha Sharp at 316-321-9100 by 5:00 PM the Tuesday preceding the meeting. Presentations are limited to 10 minutes, any presentation is for information purposes only, no action will be taken. And tonight, we have a personal appearance from Pastor Debbie McClure from the Nazarene Church in regards to the cold weather shelter.
First, I want to thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for allowing me to come tonight and to speak with you about our ministry of the homeless shelter that's here. It's been in there since, for about five years, four years. But I recently read, and you can look at the materials, I recently read about 2015, Eldorado had a visioning summit for the city here. I don't know if any of you remember that. But they, um, it was to benefit the community as measured by increase of payroll, business, employment, housing, and similar factors. So tonight, I want to present to you the mission and direction for the homeless shelter in our church. Can I move this down just a little?
Sure.
It's steaming up my glasses.
You're fine.
Uh, thank you. And I want to present that to you tonight, that was adopted by us. Every pastor that is present tonight, we wear many house hats. One of them is that we are CEOs of a corporation. But another one is that we are shepherds and pastors of a congregation. And we follow that. If you, if I was a stranger and you did not take me in, or you didn't clothe me, or you didn't feed me, or you didn't give me drink, that you have done that unto the least of these. And his disciples questioned that, and he wanted them to understand, anytime you give the least of these a drink, you are doing it unto him. Every city and town have homeless population, even here in Eldorado. And I know it's hard to believe, I just moved back here two years ago, and I was amazed that there are homeless here, but there are. And I have been down in that shelter, ate with them, and had talked to them and know that they are from this particular area. And this is a ministry that comes out of our church, and we want to shelter those who are, um, who are in trouble. We are crisis shelter, that's what we are logged as with HUD. They call us a crisis shelter. And that's what we are, we are not a bop house, we are not an extended, um, extended transitional housing. We are crisis-based. And this, I think this is the one you're looking at. You will see the stats there, you will see also what we, what has been provided, you will see all the people and places that have backed us. And then, um, at the very end, you will see the BHI board members and staff. And I want you to notice something in particular. These are well-educated women and men. They are there to put together the very best we can do, and to make sure it's very clear and complete what we do. And I think this other paper is a timeline of the, I wasn't here for all of the cold weather shelter approval. And so, um, the Church of the Nazarene would very much like to keep this as our mission and our ministry and in our building. We are part of them, they are part of us now. And they do donate some money, but we are providing them with heat and internet and water and electricity, trash service. And we want that to continue. And I understand there were some questions about how that was to continue or would continue. And I hope I can answer some of those for you tonight. They're still reading, they...
Yeah, I mean, definitely, judging by the stats and by what we've seen, the, this cold weather shelter provides a great, I mean, a great service, I think a needed service to the community, so. I appreciate that.
I'll just read the timeline, I've been here for this whole thing, and that's pretty much the way I remember it.
Refresh our memories on the length of time you're open October to whatever the number of people that you have room for.
It opens, it's supposed to open October 1st originally, I think it was November 1st, it opened October 1st. It hasn't, a soft opening has occurred where we have opened for them to come in and get a lunch. But October 1st through April 30th, and we had room for 10. And then if we, which last year, they overflowed a great deal for the first part of winter. Then BHI pays and sends, they put the bill for them to go to a motel. And those are selected by, um, the people that go to the hotel are selected by Holly, who has worked there and is in close proximity with everyone that comes in. And so she selects those that would, would take good care of the hotel if they have to go there. And I want you to know there's, there is, they are very tight, very strict. Everybody is warned when they come in, they must put all of their things in the locker. And no weapons. And has there been a few issues? Yes, but no, nothing that has not been taken care of immediately. The police drop in very often, once we open, they'll come in and just come in and talk to everybody. And when I came, that was, I wanted to see, what is it that you have, what rules do you have? And how is it organized? And it is immaculately organized. I don't think it could be better.
Do you see anybody that is chronic homeless? I mean, do you see the same people over and over again?
I, I believe that there are probably some, I could, I think Terry probably could answer, Holly could answer that better.
Oh, there's Holly.
Yeah, Holly.
I couldn't tell Holly behind her mask.
Um, there is a few, but Holly, I'm sorry, can you clip and introduce yourself, because you could come up to the mic? And if you don't wear your masks, they may hear you.
Um, my name is Holly Jimenez, I'm the Shelter Manager. And there are a few that come periodically, maybe one year, off-year, another year, due to like a lot of mental illnesses is what we see in those. But there's a lot of them that are not repetitive, because we try to get them housed, we try to get them jobs, we try to get them, we're trying to build them up. So, I mean, that's our ultimate goal, is not to see repetitiveness, but to help them get on their feet, so.
Has COVID made any difference?
It has, in the sense that we had to, we shut our building down early because that's what our denomination wanted. So they closed early last year. Now, it's made a difference in that they have made some definite arrangements to handle COVID. And I went down there and have walked through masks and shields, and they've built the plastic things like Walmart has. So when they feed, they can just feed in that direction. And I've opened up a little more of my building so that they can come in into the Fellowship Hall where they could spread around tables if they needed to.
Is there any funding available for homeless shelters through any legislation because of COVID?
Um, yes, we have, she does the finances, but we have received grants and stuff over COVID to top the shelter, yeah.
And I think the state of Kansas is also pitched in there, so, because they see it as a, as vital and important. I think that, I guess in the, in essence, when I think about that vision you did back in 2015, I'm thinking about, um, in essence, we are helping you. When I went to Wichita today, I got towards downtown, I was going to St. Francis, and there were homeless that had built tents around trees, they were lined up on streets. Eldorado is not that way, and we don't want it to be. I think we want a positive ministry, and I'm glad that Holly mentioned, they helped them get cell phones and IDs and helping them do some case management. So they can get places to live and get on their feet. Now, does that work every time? No, I don't know, but I learned a long time ago, if you can get one in a house and up on their feet, you're doing a good job.
Sure.
Is there any thought in the back of your mind that you want to increase the size of your shelter?
I, I don't think I can address it, I don't know. You know, if the need were there, we could talk about increasing it, yes. And the needed, I can't say that the need's not, because they are housing some at the hotel. But there are, there is a segment of homeless in this town that do not wish to go into a shelter. Because going into a shelter means following rules and not being able to smoke or be on drugs. And there are a section there that, in fact, last I heard they were at the lake, however, they had gotten kicked out of the lake, so I don't know for sure where they are now. Some of them are behind businesses, because I have people telling me that, but, um, we may have to increase, but right now, we'll be at 10.
So of the, of the 74 residents, or whoever your customers, that you had in 17, you said 74 unduplicated. How many of them, you, you never gave us a number, how many are eviction victims, you say? So 74, how many would you say was eviction?
From 2017?
Yeah.
I'm not seeing names, I don't, uh...
Well, I think maybe...
20? 25?
No.
No, it wouldn't be that.
More, less?
Less, yes, yeah.
So we've got more than we're here.
I would say a handful, I would say a handful.
Five, five to 10?
Five to 10.
Five to 10, okay. So, how long is the average stay, if you don't mind me asking? It's, it's not here, that's why.
Oh, it's like a 19 nights.
19 nights, so, so just, just under three weeks.
And during that time, Holly is giving them, set up an ID if they need that, a cellphone, the government cellphone you can get for them.
And Holly, where do you live? I'm sorry, I, you didn't say what you... Leo, okay. So, I'm, I'm just gonna be blunt with you and ask, ask the question. We are, we have actually put effort forward with our counterparts in the county and with other, other cities, trying to understand this problem. And I'm gonna, what, what we were told is that if you build it, they will come. Now, that is, that is, as I start having these conversations with citizens of this town, that's the sentiment I'm getting from them. If you build it, they will come. Your numbers show, they've increased every year, kind of shows the same trend. It's not on a grand, the grand scale of Wichita. But it is, it is showing a trend that you're getting more and more customers.
Sure.
So the logic behind it is, is that if you build it, they will come. So, I understand your mission, and I understand your sympathy, and I, and it's not that I don't have that sympathy. But what I have to do is make the best decision for, for the town and everyone. And the general consensus that I get is, is that this is not something that we want in our town. This is not something that, I mean, you, you, I don't know if you, you weren't here, I mean, you, you moved here two years ago. So you weren't here a few years back when, when the SUP was trying to get for the, for the motel, okay? And you had citizens in here for and against, and they were both passionate, and we have to represent both sides of that.
I understand that.
What I feel has happened in your situation is, is that, and I looked through the, the process that has happened in your timeline. And what I see is not, City Commission approved us to have a homeless shelter. I see that you had a conversation, the City Manager, you notified the City Manager the decision, and then you went ahead and announced it. So what I'm guessing, my question is, is that you guys have done this without coming in front of this board? Not just me, but you, is there anything out there that says, and I'm talking to staff right now, has there been a vote of this commission to approve this homeless shelter to happen in this town?
I mean, not since I've been here, no.
Okay.
No.
Okay, so, what I, where I'm, where I'm coming to you with this is, is that you, you, you haven't asked permission to do this in our town from the people that elected to make these decisions. Now you come here, 10 months ago, and you opened up a full-time homeless shelter, okay? And that's what started this conversation, that's what I'm assuming why you're here, because we said, wait a minute, to do that, you need to get a, a special use permit. And that, and then right after that, we had the, we had the pandemic happen, and so you guys had to shut down, we had to take care of business in town, and now we're readdressing this issue. You have not asked permission, and you have not got, got the blessing from us to do what you're doing. And until you do that, I will be, I will, I will be pushing to not let you open because of that. If, if I'm the only person of five that says no, and everybody else says yes, fine, you can do what you want to do, what we have, what we have agreed to do. But you haven't done that yet. And that's, that's my, and that is what I get from my, my, my people that I've talked to in this town.
Well, okay, I, I mean, I can, I can say the same thing, the people I talk to say we need it.
Yes, of course.
Can you make sure you're talking to the microphone?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
And I think, Melody, if you could come up just a minute, I think what I, um, what I, what I want to know then is, are you saying that each time I have a ministry that goes out of my church, I must come here and ask permission for it?
I feel that, I feel that you're housing people in a building that you hasn't been approved to be housed, to be housing people. That, that, that's how I feel that this scenario is. If, 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 if I was housing people in a warehouse, that has to get, that has to get a blessing, it has to get a change, it has to go through the proper steps. If I'm housing, you, I mean, you can't, you can't even have like a dog kennel, you know, and raise dogs without getting permission. Like, there's certain things that you, that, that people, that businesses and organizations have to do, and you've skirted those rules. As a, you, not you personally, because you've only been here two years, and, but you're here to represent that.
Sure, well, I guess you can.
Yeah, Melody.
My name is Melody Galt, I live at 5 Taylor, Augusta Avenue, and I was the previous Chair, President of BHI when this timeline took place. So I'm here only to speak about timeline and the process for what happened. So in March of 2015, and I'm not sure if this is on your handout timeline, we had a City Commission to ask for a special use permit for the house located at 131 North Star, I believe it was. And after two-plus hours of the house being full, standing room only, with both pro and con, Pastor Stan Seymour got up and spoke. And the house, if you are familiar with that location, is backs up against his driveway or parking lot. And so he suggested that the city, um, try and come up with a suitable location, because he didn't feel that that was the right location. He felt like we were trying to do something that was good, everybody agreed with that, it was just one of those things, finding the right location, not in my backyard type of scenario. And so after his, whatever to the Commission, I got up and I withdrew our request. And at that point, things just sort of dropped, I don't know why we were, I just didn't know. I just knew that it was not going to work if people in the city were not behind us. And to have that many people against what we were doing was just not going to work. So we left that meeting on, I believe it was March 16th. And later that year, Tom Gaskell, who was the pastor of the Nazarene Church, had been talking to my pastor, Corey Landreth at Real Life, and talked about their basement not being used, and wondered if it could be used for a shelter. So Corey and I met with him, and, um, he went to his board, and they said, find out what you need to do and move forward. So I called to Herb Llewellyn, I had been in contact with Scott multiple times about different properties around the city. And so Herb and Scott and Jay and the Police Chief and the Sheriff and the UnderSheriff, the newspaper, me. I'm trying to think if there was anybody else around that table, but you get the gist.
Yeah.
And everyone agreed that there needed to be a shelter. And so we talked about Wichita having emergency shelters, when it gets cold and when shelter is full, having an overflow. And Herb said, I think that could work. So they wanted to do a walkthrough of the church basement, and so that happened. And I have the emails of all of that timeline. And the Fire Chief said that we needed to have, um, smoke detectors, light at exit signs, someone sleeping there all the time. That someone there awake all the time when people were sleeping, and that they would approve it. And that...
That who would, who would approve it?
Herb Llewellyn and the rest of this group, and that they would notify the City Commission.
Okay.
As far as I know, Nick Badway's the only one that's on here still.
You're correct.
And whether or not he came, I don't know.
Okay.
But I have the emails saying that they would approve it.
I fully grasped that, and I'm, and I was waiting for you to get to the point where, where you said that a City Commissioner's name. And you had a great meeting with all, a bunch of people, except for the five people that could give you permission rightly to do this. You, my guess is you didn't want to do it because of the meeting where you withdrew your application, because you, there was a lot, there, it was for and against of that meeting, okay? I, I, I fully, I, I watched that meeting, and I witnessed what happened in that meeting, okay? So my, what I'm saying is, is that you skirted that. And, and because, and, I mean, this is my opinion, and it's...
I wouldn't do that, and I told them it's...
But, but, but again, but again, but again, and I'm not, and I'm not, and Scott, Scott's a great guy, Herb Llewellyn's a great guy, but the, the thing is, is that this has not been approved by this commission.
And that's fine, today, if that's what needs to happen, that's fine, but that's not what we were told.
That's what I would like to see happen, and that's where I'm going with it.
And that's fine, I'm not on the board anymore, and what happens from this day forward is fine, I just simply was coming to give timeline of how it happened. And I can assure you, sir, as I told everyone at that time, I'm not going to do something behind the scenes or against the rules, I wouldn't do that. We have two separate operating things, one was for transition, that isn't this, this is cold weather, it was sent to the city, it was sent to whoever, it was forwarded to everyone. If it didn't get forwarded here, I apologize for that, that's not, wasn't my place to do.
But Melody, then what you're saying is it was sent in Duffwood through, through City Staff at the time, and it came back to you guys with the thumbs up.
Yes, yes, and I have the emails saying that.
Because, because it wasn't deemed a full-time.
Right, and it hasn't been.
It was cold weather only.
Right.
It was done at the staff level.
Right.
And at the time, it was fine, I mean...
Right, and I get that, I'm just saying that, because I know that you guys, I mean, the point, the point that I'm making there is, I know that you're operating in good faith, I mean, I know that you're not gonna, you know, try and, try and skirt the rules.
Right.
So you guys got a, you know, a thumbs up back from, from staff to move forward with the cold weather, what you're saying is the cold weather...
And that's how we operated until I left a couple of years ago.
I'm still helping out.
And from, from this point on, that, that would be someone else's decision to do and ask for permission for something else. But I just wanted to give you the timeline from when I was there and how that moved forward.
So my question would be, do they need something?
From my perspective, and worked a lot with Melody and others with BHI over the years on this, and, and community and everything, you know, this is a temporary nature. Cold weather shelter is only to be operational in the cold weather months when people really needed that shelter. And, and, and my, my thought and my perspective on it was, temporary nature, let's see, try this out, see how it works, see if it goes okay with the neighborhood. And, and which, honestly, from what I've seen, is, we haven't heard complaints, we haven't had issues from the surrounding neighbors. So when I met with Terry, um, a while back, after she came to the Commission meeting, I said, here's the process, you know, it's been a number of years, it's probably time we talk about getting zoning in place and getting this all lined up. And what better, you know, a lot of times when you go to the land use, there's always, always these unknowns, and they've been through these public hearings where people say, well, what if this happens, what if that happens? Well, they kind of have this track record now of how it's operated. And it seemed, they'd be able to tell their story via a public hearing on, on requesting a special use permit. And, and in my mind, it is time to get that proper zoning in place, you know? We went through a process, we created definition, we created the rules, so I, I do think it's time.
Why was the zoning not required in the very beginning, and, and we've gone five, six years down the road now?
There, there are certain things within zoning laws that are allowed to be kind of a temporary nature. Like, you know, you can have a trailer home in your front yard while you build a house for no more than six months. I think that was kind of a thought process, there was, there was a presentation of an immediate need, like, we need to do something, we've got this, hey, come look, can we make this work? And the City Manager at that time made a decision to let it happen.
Okay, and if we are cold weather, we are still rezoned, is that what you're saying?
No, that, that's not correct. And like Ms. Galt said, I was here. No, that, that's not correct. And like Ms. Galt said, I was here. The first time a special use permit was requested, and I voted in favor of it. The second time, I was going to vote in favor of it. Didn't get that chance, but be that as it may. When, when the decision was made at staff level, we were told that this is a temporary thing, and there will be, they are looking for another site, hopefully with, they can get everybody's or enough blessing that they feel comfortable. Bottom line, it never happened. So it kind of got, you know, every year, yeah, it gets cold every year. It gets cold every, every fall and every winter, it gets cold. Nobody's ever said anything. As far as no complaints, I've had some complaints, me personally, that I know people that live very close to the church and have had some break-ins into, not saying it was any of your patrons don't know that, because they were never caught, but it didn't happen until after that, until after the cold weather shelter was put in place. May just be a coincidence. I'm not saying yea or nay.
The way I see it, as long as they exist as a cold weather shelter, they should be okay with just a staff decision?
Well, I think it's gone on for a number of years, and, and their model and their plan is continue in this location. So I do think, you know, we need to...
Was there stipulation back then that they would not continue and have lived in that place?
I, four, five, I don't know. I can't recall, so...
We don't know. It, it was, it was not a commission decision. It was a staff decision.
I just have emails from the second year when we approached the eight, which was our limit. And so Scott and I talked at that time about whether or not we could raise that, what the reasons were from the fire chief of why we couldn't. And so he spoke with him and was able to get back with me through email, which I have, that it would be okay to go up to 10, because we had people awake. So I'm just saying that they did know.
No, I, I'm not, I'm not disputing that, and I'm not saying that was wrong, and I'm cool with it. But it's been coming on five years, and if we're gonna, we have zoning regulations for a homeless shelter. We...
Transitional home.
Pardon?
Transitional home.
Transitional, okay. Transitional home. I was on the committee or the taskful, whatever you want to call it. I mean, there were 30 of us in here. And we finally, after, I don't remember how many meetings, came up with, okay, in, in this zoning area and this zoning area with a special use permit, you can have them. So, so in my opinion, I think it's time that Butler Homeless Initiative, or whoever is going to operate this, find a, find a location in the proper zone, make a special use permit application, and get down the road.
So, so what I would say is, and, and this is very, this, this is and continues to be valuable conversation, but this is a personal appearance. We, this is not an agenda item that staff has been able to prepare information for us for. We don't take action during, during personal appearances or public comments. I, I think it's probably best for staff to work with BHI, gather the information, bring it to us, so we can have the information in front of us, rather than trying to kind of shotgun it back.
Because if 10 minutes of personal appearances going on 35.
But I'm just saying that way, we can, we can put the information together and have the conversation about whether we, whether we need to, to zone it, whether the, the cold weather shelter is, you know, it's, again, I'm fully aware and, and, and a full supporter of the fact that you've been operating in good faith. And I believe, I know that based on, I mean, based on what you've presented, plus my knowledge of the situation, and you know what, what Nick said as well. I mean, so you guys, you guys have been operating in the manner that, that, that staff at, at the time said to move forward. But if, we, we need to, we need to kind of get stuff on paper and kind of formalize some things. And I think this is an opportunity, and Scott brought this up. A lot of the questions that arise during the, during the zoning process are a lot of what ifs. You guys have five years under your belt now to be able to answer a lot of those what ifs, and I think that that's helpful as well. But I mean, in all fairness, you know, we're, as far, as far as like trying to make a direction or decision, this isn't the time for that.
No, I just wanted you to have the information.
No, I appreciate that, Melody.
And the truth is, if you would like to have written information, if you'll remember back when we were proposing transitional housing, we had a manual, if you will, of how that was going to operate. When we went to temporary cold weather shelter, that changed because we weren't going to be housing people for three months to, at a time, all day, every day. So we have both of those documents. If you guys would like to have copies to see the difference between those two.
I would. I think it'd be best to work with, to work with David and kind of get the stuff put together so that they can put it in, in our format for us. But I mean, I'm not trying to shut you off. I'm just saying that, I mean, this is a...
We just have that available.
I know, and I, I, I have no doubt that you guys have that available, and I appreciate that, because I remember that from then as well.
And I'd also like to say, if we build it and they will come, that's not true. Majority of, majority of the people that we help are from Butler County. They are, they, they're here. I mean, I went to school with some of them. I went to, you know, they're here. And I understand, like, that is a lot of misunderstood. I get that a lot. But the reality of it is, out of 74 that we served last year, it was only 11 out of Butler County, and that are known out of Butler County. There's 11 of them that we weren't able to figure out where they're from. But those are people like off the turnpike, the rep, two people brought in. There was two missionaries that stayed with us one night. So it is majority of Butler County residents or that have ties to Butler County that are staying with us.
We should convince your Butler County commissioners to that.
Yeah, because your commissioners don't believe that.
Your Butler County commissioners have stated to us in a joint meeting that there is no homeless problem in Butler County.
Well, you give me a meeting with them and I will...
And we have reps that are in Butler County. I mean, it is, it is needed here.
I do want to tell you that.
So we are going to let them continue as a cold weather shelter for us?
I mean, they're, again, in my opinion, they're operating under good faith. We've got to, we've got to circle this back around and get information in front of us, but we can't make a decision, any, any decision to change that, I don't think, tonight.
Okay. So we should open as a cold weather shelter, which is what we were going to do.
Which is what you've been doing. And, but I, I'm telling you, I mean, I think it's the general idea up here, that we've got to get this back in front of us and get this, get, get something long-term figured out.
I will tell you that my denomination is not in favor of you rezoning my church building.
Sure.
So...
That would make sense.
That would, that would...
First of all, for clarification on that, we would have to actually be rezoning the church. The church's zoning would remain the same as it's today.
And just have a special use permit.
They would have a special use permit, which is entirely different.
Which doesn't...
David, if I recall, I think we do have to rezone the church property and do an SGP at the same time, because I think the church is...
Okay. So what I'd like for you, hang on. What I'd like for you guys to do is work with, work with BHI to get some information to us, so that we can, we can move forward with getting this going. But, but again, I'm not, you know, on the day that you're planning on opening, it's not like, from my perspective, or at least, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, it's, we're not taking action or to shut anything down. I just want, I'd like to get this all done right, so that, so that if we're moving forward, we can move forward.
I would too. Okay.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Uh, thank you, by the way, Pastor. You're coming up. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Public comments next on the agenda. First, and we should address the city commission regarding items not on the agenda that are under the jurisdiction of the city commission. May do so when called upon. Comments on personnel matters and matters pending in court are not permitted. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Any presentations for information purposes only, and no action will be taken. Citizens with information for the city commission are encouraged to contact City Clerk Tabitha Sharp at 316-321-9100 for instructions on alternative ways of communicating with the city commission. Is anyone here for public comment?
Doesn't look like it.
I have a quick question. Are, can people still email into Tabitha? Is that, is that what, is, are we operating that way?
They can, they can do both.
They've always been able to, even prior to COVID.
Oh, we, okay, I didn't know that.
Yeah, we, we'd have times when we'd, Tabitha or David or the pastor would read us a public comment. I think that's been available. Good question, though.
Thanks.
Seeing that there's no one here for public comment, we'll move on to the consent agenda tonight. On the consent agenda is approval of city commission minutes from September 21st, 2020, and the special city commission minutes from September 2nd, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that consent agenda is presented, be approved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Nothing. An old business under new business. Resolution amending the general financial and budgetary policies for the city of El Dorado, Kansas.
City Commissioner, before you, as a proposed amendment to the general budgetary and financial policies of the city, based upon our prior discussion on updated structures, I have brought forward a proposal to change the section on real estate, which is, they're not really numbered, but that section would change. Basically, what it would change to would be, right now, the proposal is to bump that up, so the city manager would be authorized to make purchases of real estate up to the city manager's current authority, which is $50,000. I set that there, but, because I didn't know where you wanted it from the prior discussion. But if you'd like to reduce that, you can do that as well. And so we just need to know where you want that level to be set.
And that's the spending authority that we've granted to the city manager on all other...
That's the existing purchasing policy right now.
Do I think it's appropriate?
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution Number 2908, a resolution amending the general financial and budgetary policies for the city of El Dorado, Kansas.
Motion is second. Is there any further discussion or questions about this? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Uh, motion carries 4-1. Uh, new business. Resolution setting public hearing for abatement of dangerous structures.
Yes, there are four homes or four properties, which are 712 West Ash, 307 South Atchison, 733 South Denver, and 805 South Main, that we're asking you to set a public hearing for the ultimate consideration of demolition of those structures. That public hearing would be set on November 16th. We spoke about these properties at a work session last Wednesday. There has been one that has been removed, that is 708 South Star. We are currently in the process of acquiring that property as we speak. So that will be taken care of, that will be demoed prior to even the public hearing of, of these four.
Is that the one you had the biggest concern about? Is that the one you were...
That's the one that had a fire, you know, prior weekend.
And the public hearing would be...
Uh, November 16th, November 16th at 6:30, right here. We're going to be done. All owners, any interested parties will be notified. We'll be, we'll do title searches on all these to ensure that we have notified everyone properly.
This is a stupid question, but I'm curious. How many addresses in El Dorado have 33 in them?
I mean, I have to work.
More than two.
Are you a 33?
No.
I mean, when I think of homes, they're like, two, four, six, 10, 12.
I'm a 20.
That's all on the...
I saw that and thought it was a typo.
33's on the south and west.
I don't know.
Yeah, but...
I'm shooting my grid.
Well, we'll have, let's get staff on that. How many 33s are there?
Staff, staff researched that for me.
We'll have an answer for you later.
Uh, do I have a motion?
I move that Resolution Number 2909, a resolution authorizing the scheduling of a public hearing on November 16, 2020, at 6:30, for the purpose of abating or removing the dangerous structures at 712 West Ash, 307 South Atchison, 733 South Denver, and 805 South Main.
Second.
I have a motion is second. You guys have any other discussion or questions?
So it's 45 days until the, the public hearing, and then do we have a vote after the public hearing?
You guys will make that determination that evening. You can say, we want it torn down ASAP. You can give the owner so many days. And if they don't, you can tell them in that letter, we will do it for you and, and assess the property. You, you have a lot of leverage there at that public hearing.
And are we doing this off of this year's demolition fund?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. So the funds are there.
Yes.
So, I mean, logically, if we wanted to, we could have them down by the end of the year.
What a rip there to them.
Okay. I mean, I, I think that's what I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to get a feeling. That's kind of what I'd like to see, if we're...
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
Just get it done by the end of the year.
Yeah.
And I, I think staff will be ready, if you'll, to bring another set after the first of the year. I, and I should note that in the event that they're not, not going to raise money by the end of the year, that money doesn't go away. That fund is not budgeted, so those funds will still be there for the, when they, that loses its funding.
Yeah, but it's good to have a goal.
It's good to have a goal.
Right. I'm just saying that the last one, you guys gave them 40 days, and that would be pretty much the end of the year. So the monies wouldn't go away, just for now.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0.
So we do have one more thing in terms of new business. It's not on the agenda, and I apologize for the fact the decision was made today to put it on. I talked to Ashlyn late this afternoon. As we were talking about the Prairie Trails agreement to sell the, the golf course to Mr., Mr. Troy Palmer. Ashlyn and I both believe that it's time for us to file suit against Great Life. They have not returned phone calls and/or emails to get the termination agreement signed, so that we can free up the money in the, in being held in escrow. So in talking to her, she thought it would be appropriate for us to go ahead and take that, make that motion here tonight, so we can get that expedited, so that we can get that hopefully resolved forthwith, so as not to unduly delay any other proceedings we may have with Prairie Trails. So we prepared a motion. I believe the mayor has it, and so if we can have action on that, that would be great. And if you have any questions, I can take to us as well, but...
You gonna make it?
I got it. I gave it to Matt, because I said it's one minute. I move to delegate authority to the city manager to file suit against Great Life Augusta, LLC, Great Life Kansas City, and JJ and J, Inc., regarding the purchase agreement approved by the city on February 4th, 2019.
Second.
I have a motion is second. Is there any further questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. City Commission Advisory Board.
Yes. Parks and Rec met, did some catching up. We had a personal appearance by Bobby Crosby submitting a BMX proposal, wanting a BMX course. Evidently, El Dorado's had one in the past.
We did.
And...
Real Park.
Yeah. So anyway, he presented this to us. And there were lots of questions by the advisory board, questions from me. So he's getting together with Kevin Wishert and discussing what it is that they need to do to present it to the advisory board to even begin thinking about it. The biggest problem from the advisory board seemed to be the liability of the city on a BMX course. And they were going to check into that also. Lauren Anthony was re-elected chairperson, and Tyson Nielsen was elected vice chair. Kevin went through the different sales tax projects that were approved by the Sales Tax Committee on all the park spending. The advisory board was quite pleased with, with how much they were able to get to put into the parks. We talked about fall activities. Numbers are down, of course, because of COVID. They had, we've got a total of 280 kids involved in activities as compared to 500 last year. In soccer, we have 86. In soccer, we have eighty-six, two hundred and five last year. Volleyball, there's eighty-six kids compared to a hundred and ninety-two last year. Flag football, there's fifty-six participants as opposed to a hundred and twelve last year. The coaches wear masks. They don't ask the players to wear them when they're out playing. They do ask that the parents spread out in the bleachers so that there's some distancing. And recommend that they bring lawn chairs so they can even distance even more so. We talked about vandalism at the parks. And Kevin talked about the possibility of cameras being a bit of a discussion with the city commission, and so they were glad to hear about that. That's basically Park and Rec.
Library board hadn't met.
They, Inc. has posted their assistant director job. Is that on the other website?
It's on the city's website, right? Or is it just on Inc.'s website? It's in Facebook.
Good. That's all I have. Commissioner, you got three.
Um, CTC met, we met two weeks ago, two or three weeks ago. We basically discussed kind of what, that now that Molly was gone and kind of getting back up to speed. The big topic for that group was the hundred and fiftieth celebration. They accepted, they accepted the role of being the-
Steering committee?
The steering committee, trying to figure out what we want to do. And then, once, once that, I think next month they're going to meet, kind of what activities and events that they want, that is what we're going to do, and then they're going to go to the, and figure out how to get them done. I think the thought process right now is, like, talking to local businesses to sponsor a street dance or an ice cream social or the different things and trying to get it where it's not fully, the city's not fully paying for it. I, I think that, I told them that I would, would talk to you guys and kind of what, what would you guys would like to see happen for the hundred and fiftieth also, so it'd be put on the list. But that was, that was kind of really everything, wasn't it? It's where next month will be, or this month, it'll be this month. Will be kind of the down and dirty, and they want to have everything set by November so they can have till February to really recruit businesses and help in funding.
So, this meeting you're having on October twentieth, are we welcome to come?
Just keep your mouth shut.
It's a public meeting. It's a, it's a published CTC meeting, so it's welcome to the public. I'm working on reaching out to other people who've said they're interested in participating in the planning of the hundred and fiftieth. We had, we had three or four people asked to help, and so they'll be helping the CTC board. And then we'll ask for other volunteers also throughout next year. But, I just have a group of about ten people helping plan the whole thing, so. It'll be here at city hall, the one on the corner.
Five thirty.
But there was, there was a lot of energy in that room, lots of good ideas. I, I think, I think that's a good group to kind of handle that, that project for us. And I think that it'll, it'll get done. It's exciting. And that's all I got.
City manager's report.
Uh, so the city, the citizen survey is out and we are receiving ample copies, responses, I should say. I think the last count was probably over five hundred. And then they have a bunch coming today yet, again, so I don't know what the most recent number is, but we've, and that's just the paper copies, not online yet. We haven't really counted those. So, we've gotten a pretty fair amount of responses, but if you have not yet responded, you have the couple options, the version, the copy that was sent to you via your house, via mail. You can fill that out, send it in, in the envelope that was pre-posters paid. You can also fill it out on the city's website, or you can request, you can come into city hall and we can give you additional copies of the survey for your completion. The deadline to participate is October fourteenth. And again, there's a number of prizes, to include the grand prize of one year of free utilities, but a number of other prizes. So, folks that are interested should complete their survey so we can get their input, but so they can also be eligible for this, that drawing.
David, the deadline is actually Friday at five?
Oh, the deadline is Friday at five, not the fourteenth. Apparently, that's been changed.
The fourteenth is when they ask to see it.
Okay. So, you'll have it by then. Congressman Estes will be a special guest at the chamber chat tomorrow, I'm sorry, Wednesday at the Civic Center starting at eight AM, so if any of you are around, you can come down and listen to what Congressman Estes has to say. We still have some CDBG CV grants. The first round went out and we, we did not get enough requests for all the funding that we were awarded. So, we're doing the round two. So, if you're a business and you meet the requirements, which are available on your website, you can still put in an application. Please do so by Friday. And then we will get those through the process so we can get you awarded funds. I believe that we had seven applicants, and we do have some monies that are still available for that. Because we didn't have enough applicants, we didn't have more than enough requests for funding that exceeded the number of applicants, we didn't actually have to use our committee this time around. So, I guess there was some small benefit to that. It gets the money faster. And so the, so that'll be coming up. Uh, community news, we're going into flu season, so Susan B. Allen will be conducting, well, they'll be partnering with Butler County Health Department to provide a drive-through flu vaccination clinic. For those in the community who are uninsured, the clinic is from four to six on October seventh. So, that will be this Wednesday. And this one is actually at Augusta Public Safety Building in Ohio Street, on Ohio Street. I think they were going to have one in El Dorado. That one may have already passed. So, that information has been posted on our Facebook page, so if you are curious about when that is or if it's already happened, then it'll be on our Facebook page. Friends of the El Dorado Lake are hosting a mud run on Blue Stand Point this Saturday at noon. So, if you're interested, you can participate in that event. And then the Celebration of Freedom Parade is still scheduled for November seventh. Details will be coming on that annual celebration. And as Tabitha mentioned, if there's anyone that's interested in helping with the hundred and fiftieth celebration, go ahead and give her a call at cityhallthree two one ninety-one hundred, or you can also email her at tsharp@eldoradoks, I'm sorry, eldoks.com. I believe that's all I have for now.
So, just the, the funds for those grants.
Yes.
What happens if we don't get any more applicants?
Uh, the money will be returned to the state.
Is the, is it our guidelines or the state's guidelines that?
It's the state's guidelines. So, the CDBG program has to comply with the CDBG regulations that have come down now.
So, I mean, I guess my question is, is, do you think the regulations were prohibitive for some of the applications?
That's probably fair to say. They require certain income thresholds to be met. I, that's, that's generally what CDBG requirements are dialed in on is the income of the employees, so, yeah.
Okay, I just, I mean, I just, if there was something that we could do to change that, then I would just try to kind of get to the bottom of that.
Yeah, no, unfortunately, it's, it's the case of the CDBG requirements. And it's my understanding that there are other cities that are having the same problem. They, they have funds, but they, they aren't really able to get them out to businesses as easy as they want because of those restrictions.
Okay. Thank you.
If someone has already gotten a grant, can they reapply for more?
Uh, I believe my understanding is that the answer is no. We can verify that just in question.
I thought there was a max that could be awarded for business, but I don't know.
Well, in many cases, they, these businesses will have already, they will have requested the max, or if their request was greater than the max, they'll be reduced down to the max, so.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh. Have a great night.
Incidentally, it's six to three at halftime.